All right, we'll call this meeting to order. If we could please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Bry Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Albritton.
Present.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Kozinski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. If you can please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming out this evening and joining us. We appreciate you fitting a special meeting into your schedule. This truly is a very special meeting. So, I want to just make a couple of comments before we get started. Andy and Russell are not physically here, but they are watching. They are up in Orlando attending a conference up there for training education. And so, if something comes up and we need a response from either one, they are here listening. So, and a couple other comments, actually. One is, obviously, I think everybody's aware, there's a big storm coming this weekend. Please just make sure you're prepared for that. It's not a hurricane, it's not a hurricane, but it is going to be mostly a rain event. So, probably some flooding. And so, just please be prepared for that as it comes. All right. So, with that, let's go ahead with item number three.
Mayor, if you don't mind, we'll read it into the record, then you can make a motion, and then I will explain everything, the background.
Perfect. Thank you, Keith.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving the selection and negotiation committee's selection of MG3 Developer Group LLC, doing business as MG3 SWR Industrial LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company, as the most responsive and responsible bidder to purchase and to develop the town's former CCA property, entering into a purchase and sale agreement, entering into a perpetual profit participation agreement, waiving any and all procurement code requirements that may be in conflict, authorizing the mayor, the town administrator, and the town attorney to execute the agreements, authorizing the appropriate town staff to make any and all modifications to these agreements that may be necessary and proper to effectuate the intent of this resolution, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. You have motion and second to approve. Is there...Keith, you're going to give an introduction to this item?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm going to give a full introduction, especially for anyone watching it on TV.
Thank you, Keith.
And first off, Mayor, thank you to the council for having a special meeting tonight to discuss this item. Just for anyone watching at home, we're heading into the summer, and there were very limited times where we could get all five council members in here before, I think it was like August or late July, somewhere around there. So, it was great that we could all come together to review the items. I also want to tell you that for the public who was like, "Why did it come up online a little bit later than normal?" While the council had copies of the purchase and sale agreement and the development agreement probably a month ago or so, and I've announced it probably at every single meeting for the last five months, MG3, who's here tonight, Hernan Leonoff, has a lot of attorneys, and they read a lot of contracts, and they make a lot of changes and comment. And although nothing was substantial in terms of what you and I would think is changes the deal at all, it's the minutia legal language that they wanted to ensure that they were comfortable with before the item was on the agenda. And unfortunately, one of their council was incredibly busy, and it took them a long time to get forward. So, apologize for the delay, but nothing really changed from the time the council originally saw it. So, why are we here tonight? Let's go back a little bit to roughly 2000, when a company called Correction Corporation of America came to us and said, "We want to enter into an agreement with you all to market our ability to build a correctional institution on a property out west that's directly between the landfill Bergeron Industrial Park." And at that point, it was a women's prison was out there as well. The town looked at it, looked at the potential revenue that it could bring into the town, and agreed in a formal agreement to help Correction Corporation to market the property, to help them find an end user for the property. That's what the town agreed to. And in exchange for that, we were to get 4% of the income for the property for life, for the prison. In that agreement, which was hotly negotiated, and I was a fledgling attorney with a lot of hair back then, miss those days, I actually put a clause in that agreement. And they didn't know why I put it in. Quite frankly, I don't know why I put it in. But I put in there that we had the right of first refusal should they decide to ever want to sell that property. Okay? Sure enough, as time went on, the town didn't get into the best relationship with the city of Pembroke Pines. And the city of Pembroke Pines decided that they were going to buy the property and take it out of the Town of Southwest Ranches and take all of the economic value of that property away from the town. The council enacted the clause, the right of first refusal clause, which quite frankly, CCA didn't even remember was in our agreement. And we said, "We're going to buy the property, and we're going to do everything in our power to figure out how we're going to buy the property." And thanks to the wisdom of all the councils before, and that council decided to make it happen. The town then rolled all of its debt, from the entire town, into that property and posted a bond, a new bond issuance for that property for, I think it was just over eight million and change for that property. And that was the entire debt of the town that was all rolled into the property. So, people keep saying, you know, "The purchase price was eight million, et cetera." It was, but it was financed in a manner in which it took all of the town's debt and dumped it specifically onto that property. So, fast forward several years later, the industrial market is probably one of the hottest markets in South Florida. And being near US 27, being, you know, near some of these, the industrial parks that are being developed, including Bergeron's at max capacity, and the new one that was just built in Pines on the other side of this property is at max capacity. It showed an opportunity for the town to potentially market the property for what the town originally wanted, which was an industrial use of the property, which making it warehousing. I have known MG3 and Hernan Leonoff and his two partners probably for maybe 20 years now. I worked with them in the past. By the way, I disclosed to Andy and everyone at the time that I did have prior business relationships with them, that you have their own council, in-house council, and separate council for this transaction. And I said to them, "Hey, you all just sold a massive portfolio." It was well advertised that they got a handsome sum of money for a portfolio of schools that they sold, and they're always looking to do what's called 1031 exchanges and buying new properties and having buying opportunities. And I said, "We have a great piece of property that would be perfect for you. It's industrial, the property's never been touched, and you would be a perfect fit for development." They looked at the site and actually came back and said, "We really like it. We'd like to submit an offer. How do we do it?" Well, we said, "Since it's not currently on the market, where there's no realtors or anything else, no one's getting commissions or anything, you know, what you have to do is you have to submit what we call a P3 proposal to the town." What that is, is a private-public partnership in which they would make an unsolicited offer to the town, and if the town agreed to look at that offer, then we would do a formal procurement. That's what happened. Hernan drafted an offer, I think the first offer was around 16 million and change for the property, submitted it to the town, and with that, and a check for 25,000 because we're a cost recovery. And with that, within 30 days, we had on the street a procurement to see qualified vendors who would like to do something on this property. We had one other respondent to the procurement, who although price-wise was very comparable to MG3, they had a lot of caveats in the deal, including they were flipping the property after they developed it. So, it was a lot of wait-and-see situation. MG3's offer was pretty simple. It was, "We will pay you X for the property, and we will pay you Y to have a participation in the property into perpetuity." And that, to the SC, was the selection committee, was very promising. So, the selection committee immediately selected MG3 as the vendor for the property. As we started our negotiations, MG3 saw huge upside in this property for multitude of reasons. Some people say to me, "You know, this deal's really good," but I keep saying it's on both sides. Let me explain why. The Town of Southwest Ranches does not have a lot of the same taxes and fees that other municipalities charge tenants in industrial properties. They have, you know, business tax receipts, which they call "incentivated uses," and other things that they charge annual fees to the tenants. We don't have any of that, you know? We don't have any of the other surcharges, the impact fees, that all the municipalities charge. So, when we do deals, it's great for developers such as this because they're not hit with impact fee after impact fee, transportation impact fee, parks impact fees, school impact fees. We don't have any of that in the town, which makes it a very palatable place to build. So, MG3, after looking at the realities of the town's fees, came back to us and said, "We are able to give you, we call it a best and final offer, for the property at 18,600,000, and we are able to give you 6% of the profits," and I'll explain what the net profits means in a minute, "moving forward on that property." And of course, we kept trying to push MG3 properly to increase that participation portion of it. But luckily, we didn't push too hard because he was hit last week with a note from the South Florida Water Management District that they want 1.8 million, correct, for the wetland mitigation on the property. And if you remember, when we bought it, there was no wetlands on the property. So, within that timeframe, between buying it and having a clean wetland report to today, they now all of a sudden want 1.8 million to mitigate the wetlands on the property. So, what's before you tonight? We have two agreements, and they're pretty simple, okay? And to those of you who I've spoken to, I generally call it "the cake and the icing," okay? Because the cake is really good, you know? And the cake is a very fair market value of the property. MG3 is offered to pay 18.6 million for the property. They gave themselves the ability to pay it in two tranches with the closing on the second tranche, and let me explain what I mean. We're on a fiscal year, they're on a calendar year, which causes some minor differences as it relates to accounting for them. They know that if they pay off our bond prior to October 1 fiscal year, that Emil will be very happy because he doesn't have to include that in the financing, the town's budget and financing for the next year. So, MG3 has agreed to pay off the remainder of the $8 million bond, which is roughly 7,750,000. I don't know exactly what it will be until, you know, that month comes up. But they will pay that off immediately by September 30th, so the bond will be completely retired. They will then put a lien on the property or whatever, you know, instrument they want to secure the fact that they're purchasing it. And then by December 31st, before December 31st, they're going to pay the remaining 10,800,000 roughly for the property. They can pay it then, they can pay it before, they could pay it all at once, whatever they decide to do. If they don't close by December 31st, the eight million's ours. That's hard money. They move on with life, you know, and the deal is done. So, that gives the town an immediate ability to retire its bond, and from a municipality that rolled every single bit of its debt into that property, we will be the only municipality in Broward County with not one single penny of debt after this transaction is done. Emil would say, "Oh, we always have debt." But, you know, in terms of real debt, you know, that is fully retired. That is the cake, okay? It's pretty simple. I think it's a 30-day further due diligence on the property. They've been doing due diligence for the last four months, all right? What are their biggest sticking points on the property, just so that everyone knows? There's a lot of muck out there. Removing the muck's expensive. Filling that property is going to be very expensive. They're working through all their numbers right now to make sure that, you know, everything works out. So far, I'm sure Hernan will tell you, everything's working out. The only hit to them was the 1.8 million for the wetlands, but we've agreed that we will go hand-in-hand with them to the South Florida Water Management District and the county to work on negotiating that, and I have faith that we'll be able to get that number down considerably. So, that is the cake side. So, what is the icing side? The icing side is a perpetual agreement to have a profit share in the property forever. Some people say, "Why would a company do that?" You know? There are huge advantages of any company having a partnership agreement with a municipality going forward. It's incredible for marketing, okay? It has major abilities for them to do things with other governmental entities, like we're helping them with, with South Florida Water Management District, with the county and otherwise. And it's something that a lot of developers like to have on their books, saying that this is a property we own in conjunction with a partnership agreement with the municipality. It's a big deal, you know? It helps them a lot, you know, in multiple ways. So, the perpetual profit agreement is essentially that we get 6% of the net rental revenue, of the net rental revenue from the establishment, which is approximately a 277,000 square feet, give or take, industrial building. I've sent everyone the site plan. Plus, outdoor storage. The outdoor storage will first be offered to the tenants of that establishment. I am sure that if they all don't want outdoor storage, they're going to look quickly to rent it to everyone else. And I know there's a million residents here who are going to be very interested in parking landscape vehicles and the like and outdoor storage. And that's why we're also working with them to maximize the amount of outdoor storage with FPNL and otherwise, okay? So, what does net mean? Net is a very limited net. It's net ad valorem taxes. It's net insurance. It's net 6% of the commissions that they'll pay to realtors. But that's essentially it. It's not an endless net. It's a very limited amount of net. Through our projections on both sides, the ramp-up period is what it is, but it will start to give us about $200,000 in revenue when they get started, and it will slowly ramp up to 3 to potentially 400,000, just in that 6% participation. Based on a projection of approximately 40 to 50 million in valuation that this would go on the books for, the ad valorem tax to the town will approximately be another $200,000. So, together with those two numbers, you're looking between 400,000 and 500,000 a year just from that agreement alone. I did not include in that, and Hernan, hold your ears right now, we have a fire fee, okay? It's hard to predict exactly what the fire fee will be now because once they go on the books, they change the entire square footage analysis for the entire industrial category. But there are fire fees, there's EMS fees, there's waste fees that we get, there's FPNL fees, and I think those are the main ones that the town gets as a direct result of the development. So, as a result of this, you know, the town will start getting that revenue once the place is built. We've given them a three-year timetable to actually construct the facility. When I say things came back in the last two days, that's why there was a little bit of delay. One of the delays was that South Florida Water Management District coming back and saying, "It's going to cost 1.8 million to mitigate the wetlands out there." And he asked his engineer, "How, you know, tell me about the mitigation process." And they say, "Oh, it's not a big deal. You got to stroke a check. It generally takes a year." Okay? They said, "A year just to write a check to someone, you know, to satisfy the wetlands? This is outrageous." And what the response from Hernan and his lawyers was, "Listen, we will definitely have this constructed within the three-year timeframe. We'll probably do it before. But you can't start that clock until South Florida Water Management District, you know, agrees to the mitigation because we're waiting on a governmental entity." You know? But aside from that, there are no other impediments to constructing this site. As you all know, you approved the platnot modification. That's going before the county commission. I think next month or the next day they're open is when it's going back before the county commission. They are well aware that the comp plan committee removed prisons from uses of that site. They have no interest in building a prison, and in fact, all the agreements say industrial, and it's tied to industrial. If you read the agreements in full, the town has full rights to the use, to approve uses, you know, on that property going forward. And we structured the agreement akin to similar agreements from other municipalities in which they are holding the property for a minimum of seven years. They're allowed to transfer it internally to one of their reeds. But after that seven-year period, should they decide to sell, we get 3% of the sale price, okay? And that goes on into perpetuity as well. So, we hope this property sells yearly.
You may want to touch on the water in the sewer.
Yes, I'm going to get there in one second. The two other things I wanted to mention, in addition to the sale, I'll mention that now because I'm going to forget the other train of thought. But as it relates to water and sewer, although they would love to find the ability to connect to a service provider, they understand that politically that that's challenging at this time. They have already done their analysis and have gotten their preliminary approvals to do onsite septic and water, and they have the whole system ready to go. Reality is, is Pines wants a 3.5 million dollar upcharge, you know, for anyone to connect to their system. They're probably going to end up saving money by doing this, you know, the old-fashioned way with water and, you know, well water and septic. And also, they're not going to be hit with a surcharge in water bills constantly. And for an industrial site that has very limited water usage or even septic uses, it really is probably the way to go. So, you know, I know there was one other thing I was going to say that's going to drive me crazy financially about the deal. Oh, you know, I'm excited that this is coming to fruition. I know there is one other aspect that I wanted to mention that I'll remember in a minute, but if you all have any questions, you know, please let me know. Hernan Leonoff's here from MG3. He'll be happy to answer any questions. But to them, this is a cookie cutter industrial building that they do all the time, and they're excited to get building in the town.
Very good. The only thing I would add to that is, Keith, I just, I know that you, as you've expressed, but you are integral to getting this deal done, and I just really want to just appreciate or express our appreciation for the work that you've done on this and the way you've really, really pulled it together. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, council. Questions? I know we've all, as a council, we've had the opportunity to read through these documents, the two documents that Keith was referring to, the purchase and the ongoing participation. Any questions or comments from the council?
I think I know where Keith was going on the part where you lost your train of thought. You had left off at the 3% commission, so to speak, if, every time it's sold. If they sell after the seven years, what happens to the public-private partnership dollars?
It continues.
At the same rate?
Same rate.
Okay.
That goes on for life, and so does the 3% commission for life.
Okay, because I thought originally you told me 10 years, but maybe that's changed through the deal.
No, so, after seven years, they're allowed to sell. That was a negotiation. I think originally it was 10 years, and they said, "Listen, you got to give us the ability after seven." We said, "Fine," and that's where we said, "Well, we get the 3% also." Where I actually left my train of thought was just something to let you know. You write an agreement for the worst day. And to me, it's funny because in some ways, the cake is actually more important than the icing. You know, you have two, but you write it for a rainy day. We put a clause in here that they agree to about default, which is what I always worry about most. And what our default clause says is that in the event of default, whether it's them, predecessor, an interest, you know, whoever it may be, the town has retained the right to repurchase a property for 18.6 million dollars, okay? And I'll tell you, any day of the week, I would take that deal. You know, to be able to buy a 40, 50 million dollar property for 18.6. So, that was the one thing I just wanted to mention, that there are major provisions in there that deal with default and extraordinary remedies. But again, from my standpoint, you know, shouldn't even say this to Hernan while he's here, I would have been happy with the cake without the icing. So, you know, I'm thrilled that we were able to come to terms and be able to do both agreements.
All right. Yeah, David?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Keith, that was one of my questions I had asked initially regarding if there's a subsequent default in there, that the town gets the refusal. That's a great issue. Good work on that. On section seven of the contract where it says appropriate town staff to make any modifications, I would only ask that if it's anything that is a material change, that it does come for the council, either as a full council vote or an individual polling as to, "Hey, are you okay with this?" To that point.
Absolutely. By the way, we put that in every, every single resolution on purpose because in case there's a small change, it's never intended to be a material change. And at this point, we're at terms anyway, so there's no additional changes to this agreement. You did remind me, though, Councilmember Kozinski, if I may just add one thing. We put in the language about the waiver of procurement code, and you did call me and ask me why, so I want to just announce that publicly.
Thank you.
As well. And that is, the P3 statute has very poor language in it, and that's because my old law partner drafted it, and he wasn't a great draftsman. But what the P3 statute says is that you can long-term lease a property, and then it just stops there. It doesn't say that you actually can sell a property. So, anyone who does a solicitation through a P3 does that clause in the resolution, waiving the requirement of the code so that they can actually sell the property rather than just lease the property. So, that's why that's in there.
Right. And then one more question. And will there be effect on future ad valorem taxes for our residents?
We just had that conversation.
Yeah, there's going to be a very significant impact, a positive impact on our taxes, on our general...
Do tell.
I don't know. It looks like about half...
I asked a question to Marty before he left, if he could evaluate if retiring the bond. And he said that it would impact .623 millage across the board.
Yeah.
So, it's over half a point of millage by retiring the debt immediately.
Yeah, it's a significant impact.
It's a huge amount of money. It's, you know, over a million dollars a year.
Right.
That we would be saving.
Yeah. Increase in taxes, the elimination of the debt and the interest associated with that, all combined together is pretty powerful.
Steve, real quick question, if you would. Keith, if the property is sold, would the new owner be able to change the usage of what's there if they wanted to tear down the building and put something else there? Is that...
The agreement still allows us to not only approve the new buyer, you know, reasonable approval of the new buyer. I tried unreasonable, but he said I was being unreasonable. A reasonable approval of the new buyer, as well as we do approve the use within the agreement.
Okay.
So, but the reality is, is the code is very clear of what's allowed there and what's not. So, we're also protected by the code.
Keith, did you put in first right of refusal each time the property flips?
I did put in a first right of refusal for only the default provision, I think. Yeah, no, I don't think you want to buy it again. If you'd like that, I'm sure he'd be interested. Yeah, but no, that's...yeah, we're allowed to reject the buyer, but I did not put it in there that we could buy it. It's a lot of money.
Mayor, if I may. Yeah, this is, Keith has worked really, really hard on this, as has Andy and Russell and Marty. So, I've read this contract. I was on my fourth, fourth time reading it here. And I honestly think the way Keith's put it together, the only thing that he might have missed is an asteroid hit or a nuclear war. It's, it is so complete and detailed that it protects the town forever, you know? And I can't thank him enough for doing that. It's, it's, it's great that we have the best... It's, it's, it's great that we have the best municipal attorney in the state of Florida, probably in the southeast United States, sitting right here, helping us, and this actually proves it.
Yeah, it's a great agreement, it's a great agreement, and it's a great partnership, so we, MG3, we really, Hernan, thank you for, you know, partnering with us on this, and we look forward to this all working out. I know there's a due diligence period, this is, you know, still early on in the process, but we look forward to this being a long, long and fruitful partnership.
Want to open up to the public?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Any other comments from the council before opening up? Yeah, any, any comments from the, from the public? Come on, Gay.
He made it this far, he might as well get to the bank.
Keith, will you sell my property for me, please? I don't think you missed one spot. It's beautiful, but I've already spent your 8 million. I think we need to do our firehouse. We don't need cameras, we don't need anything, we need a real firehouse. This town has a lot of expensive homes in it, and I think we need to really address it. And that doesn't put us in debt either, if you stay under 8 million.
Right.
Because he made us a profit of 8 million on it. Plus all the rest that you're going to get, we're going to sponge up along the way for the next two lifetimes. So congratulations on it. I have no complaints, I think it's beautiful, but as I said, I'm spending the money.
It's on the list.
Firehouse.
It's on the list.
Yes, it is.
And by the way, MG3 may be interested in building the firehouse for us.
He's going to build a fire.
How much do we net?
Any, any, any other public comment?
This is no relative, is it?
I wish.
Evening, Council, John Eastman, 188th Avenue. When the property was purchased, we were kind of pushed into that, you know, it wasn't a, probably a, something we all wanted, but we've been paying on that for years, all of us, and that money is ours, it belongs to the people of the town, and the profits from the sale need to be returned to the people, not earmarked for future projects. That's money that we paid. I'm all for a new firehouse and all, I've been promoting that for years, however, we just spent a lot of money rehabbing the one we have, so I think we can put that on an amortization for a while, and get some money out of the one we just spent 2 million dollars on. The money needs to go towards reducing our millage rate over the next few years. We're in a high inflation time now, the Fed says, what, 7, 8%, but real inflation now is probably over 20%. If that money is sitting in a funder in the bank, it's just going to keep depreciating, so the best thing to do is return it to the people who had risked and paid into it. The town should retire any debt that we have on any other instruments with the money, so that we're a debt-free town, and then the remainder needs to get kicked back to us in millage reductions. And I appreciate all the work that you've done on this, and I'm really glad to put this in the rearview mirror, because it's been something that needs taking care of a long time, and I'm tickled pink that they're going to do their own water system and not be giving Pines money.
Right, there we go.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John. Yeah, Noel.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. I'd like to welcome MG3 to our town, and I hope you will be a good partner, and you won't just stay over in Aventura completely, and so, but the work that went into it on both sides of the, of the street was immense. I can tell that from looking at the document. And I'm very pleased to see it, and I'm glad to see this finally come to an end with this property. It's always been a very big thorn in our side from the day we became a town, a very big thorn. And the amount of effort and vocalization and high blood pressure that has taken place over the years, the 20 years that we have, you know, played with it, I'm glad to see that it's finally getting a good, responsible individual to maintain it, and I thank you very much for all of your effort that you took.
Thank you. Very good. Any other public comments? Seeing none? Very good. This is a big day. It's a big day for our town. And as has been stated, there's been a lot that's gone into this, a lot of work, but also a lot of sweat and tears over the years around this property, so it's awesome to see it come together and have this proposal in front of us. Seeing no other comments or questions, if we can please call the roll.
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Arbrutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bry Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Awesome. Before we, before we adjourn the meeting, I do want to, you know, normally, this would be very big, great news, but it seems like just, maybe, we had the cake, we had the icing, and now this is just a little cherry that's on the top of it, is that I heard just before the meeting, I got a call, and apparently, all of our projects are going to be approved by the governor, nothing is going to be vetoed. So that's yet another 1.5 million dollars of projects that can be done, so.
And we went up and pounded the pavement.
Yeah, special thanks to our lobbyist, super special thanks. Next time you see Robin Bartman, please give her a big, big thank you. She's done an amazing job for us, and just huge in that, so.
Before we adjourn, it has nothing to do with this going on, I have a question for Keith. I've recently had some correspondence with Sunshine Ranches HOA, and a sunshine law question came up, and I was wondering if you could add some clarity to that.
Sure, just for the public, you're writing emails or letters back and forth with the Sunshine Ranches HOA. There is no sunshine law prohibition of any council member communicating with an HOA. In addition, and you all may recall this from prior Sunshine courses, you're allowed to send your thoughts, you know, not how you're going to directly vote on a quasi-item, that's pending, but you're allowed to send your thoughts to council members even. That does not violate the sunshine law. What violates the sunshine law is a council member responding back to you outside of a public meeting. So you are allowed to send, whatever you send to an HOA, to every council member with no problem, a council member is just not allowed to respond.
Thank you for clearing that up.
All right.
And, meeting, motion to adjourn.
You're cute, Gary.
Motion to adjourn, a really great meeting.
Really great meeting, yes. Thank you all for coming out.